I'd like to bring the Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission meeting to order. This is August the 4th, 2022. May I have the roll call, please?
Here. She looks at me.
Chris Horton, here.
And Stalter.
Here.
Before we continue, we need to have a motion to approve the agenda.
Uh, before you do, I'd just like to propose a couple of modifications.
Okay.
I believe the agenda that you were given does not have the case on it. Is that correct?
Not that I recall.
Not that I remember.
The only thing we'd like to add is I believe we have a set of minutes that we sent to you guys.
Yeah, I reset that out.
Yes.
Just add that to the agenda after our new business.
Okay. Given the friendly amendments, may I have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve.
Hold a second.
Ms. Jeff Brown?
I, yes. I approve.
See how much fun we have. And Stalter.
Yes.
It's been a while since we've had a meeting.
And don't forget me. Don't forget me.
Chris Horton.
Yes.
Chris Horton.
I agree.
Okay. Um, next, before we go forward, I would like to make certain that notification went out in the required amount of time for public hearing.
We did have both in Dayton Daily and in mailing for the case that was eventually withdrawn.
Okay.
So there was notice.
And then I'll also look across the room, any problems with any kind of conflicts of interest.
None here.
None here.
All right. Could you please share with us?
Sure. So, um, originally, we had a case scheduled for this evening. Um, the applicant withdrew the case. I'll give you some basic background. They had a developer, um, in the Arlington Place subdivision who was trying to situate a house on a oddly shaped parcel. And, uh, setbacks were kind of making it difficult to, for him to build the house that the client wanted to build on the house. He was interested in, um, trying to get some reduced setbacks, so we were gonna have a minor modification hearing. However, he was able to, I guess the person looking at buying the home instead decided to buy up the adjoining two lots. And they're gonna combine it at regional planning level, um, into a single lot for the plot. So that's gonna reduce density. We're happy with that, right? It's gonna be three lots with one house on it. Um, and that's gonna make, he's not gonna have any issues with setbacks now, obviously. Um, so he was able to withdraw the case and, uh, there's no longer an issue there. So we'll just wait for him to go through the regional planning process and go from there.
Perfect.
Um, so yeah, uh, no case this evening.
Okay.
But I do have some new business for you that I wanted to discuss.
Okay.
Um, so just very briefly, and I, I have prepared what I normally do, a short rationale document to kind of explain why we wanna do this. Some visuals to help kind of, uh, get you oriented. What we're eventually seeking is a motion to bring this proposed change forward for review at Green County Regional Planning. Um, so that's what I will be requesting tonight. But let me tell you a little bit about what we're talking about here. So what we wanna do, we were approached by Matt Arnovitz, who is the owner of some of the remaining parcels here in the Beaver Park PUD, um, just across the street. Um, he's looking to, uh, use one of the existing spaces in a way that doesn't quite fit with the existing zoning documents. Um, in fact, that PUD was one of the first created, I think it's the first PUD created in Beaver Creek Township, eighty-four, I think it was. Um, PUDs have come a long way since then, in about forty years. Um, and additionally, as I was talking with him and dove into kind of the governing documents for that PUD, it's clear that, um, even talking with staff, that some of the key documentation is, uh, difficult to locate. Um, unclear in all of the requirements for the PUD. Uh, meaning, there is no resolution that we can locate, only a letter sent from the zoning commission to the developer, which was basically describing the resolution that was passed. That's what we currently use when we are determining what's allowed in terms of permits and things on those parcels. So this rezoning will kind of have two main, and we'll go into the kind of purpose and stuff, but it's gonna clean that up by reformalizing all the rules, permitted uses, all those things that are right now in a little bit of question. And it's also going to allow for the uses that Mr. Arnovitz is seeking. So I'll go into all that stuff here in a little bit, but that's just the kind of preamble. I see you maybe have a question.
Just two thoughts. Something get converted to microfiche. And the other thought is, is there anyone left that would have been on the commission at that time, perhaps Carol Graff, that may be able to shed some light on where documents may be?
So, it's possible, however, we just completed a pretty large-scale digitization effort of all of our zoning files. We took, I mean, all the way back to the thirties. Fifty-one, the earliest one, and there's even stuff before then. Um, so that's all being digitized currently.
Okay.
Even in that, we don't seem to see these records. So I'm wondering if perhaps, um, they weren't recorded properly. Obviously, it's been built up, and from what I can tell, based on, again, the, the letter is essentially the resolution, but it's just not a formal document that, if challenged, we could really.
I was going to say, and it has legal counsel.
Right.
Okay. Giving you direction.
Yes, so we've talked with Dawn. We've asked her, is this a correct course of action? And she has, in fact, she thinks it's a good thing as well, because it will shore up. If somebody comes in and wants to build something, we can say, hey, here are the rules. We just, you know, we just passed this. Versus trying to, hey, you have to do this, and the only governing document we can produce is a letter from the zoning commission to the developer.
So, whenever, maybe this is for later discussion, um, but whenever we hear something, um, we are under no legal obligation to make zoning changes. So if we're making a zoning change, I just wanna make certain that we understand the zoning changes that we are making.
Absolutely.
With that, I'm all yours.
Sure. So, um, again, I kind of gave you the, the initial rationale. I've got a parcel list here, but I think the better visualization for you is gonna be the map. So, these are the parcels that we're looking to rezone into a PUD industrial slash commercial. It's gonna allow.
And it currently is what?
It's currently PUDI, industrial. Now, again, and I'll show you the, I believe, I'll show you the, the letter that we use as well. And you'll see the list of uses is significantly reduced, even from what's allowable in I. Um, you'll also note, this is a daycare center.
Mm-hmm.
That's definitely not allowed in I.
Well, that's, you've got my attention.
So, I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
So this is just right across the street?
Yeah, th- this is us right here.
Okay.
And this is just across the street. Um, there, in addition to, the original PUD is these parcels. It's, this is kind of the line of the original PUD. These are all similar uses: warehousing, store-in-logs, construction companies, storage yards. They all fit with the industrial and semi-commercial uses that we're proposing. So we like the idea. They, these are currently zoned I industrial, I-1. We like rezoning them into the park, into this PUD. Uh, again, in case somebody were to come along and wanna revitalize one of those businesses or build something new there, their options would be expanded. And we don't think that there's any use clash between what they're doing and anything that would be proposed in the existing. I mean, this is mostly what's left.
So this is not limiting any of the current.
No, it's expanding their uses. In fact, it's allowing by rights now the daycare center, where as far as I can tell, currently, it's not allowed use. Still trying to figure out from my staff how exactly that use was approved, whether there was a BZA, conditional use variance, or something like that, but, all that being said.
What was on your transfer of data? Were you kind of finding it?
Yes, and that's, that suggests to me that the.
That's what they're saying, yeah.
That it's missing in some way.
And that, the thing that has my attention there is that daycare center.
Yeah.
Even though it's there. In the main bank, but even though it's there. So let's talk about the uses that you're asking for at this time.
So what we've done, and, oh boy, that's gonna be.
He's going to, right there. Keep it going, keep it going. There we go.
So it's a pretty extent, this is all uses listed in our code, and then you can see whether or not they're conditional, or permitted, or a blank means it's not, means it's prohibited use. In all of these different zoning classifications, so business two, three, and four, and that's like increasing intensity of business use, office, industrial, light and heavy industrial.
Reminding, C is conditional, X is approved.
Permitted, yeah. So what we did was we worked with Matt. We said, look, here's the list of uses that the township considers. Um, I'd like you to go and kind of tell me what you're looking for. And then Ed and I reviewed that list and kind of made some changes. Hey, maybe, you know, I think he was, um, trying to, maybe didn't quite understand the assignment, I guess is the way I would describe it. So there was a couple of uses we were like, well, you're never gonna get livestock processing in there. You know, that's, that's not gonna ever be a permitted use here, those kind of things. So, we've got many pages, as you can see, of uses. And I'd be glad, I mean, whatever makes you comfortable going through them one by one, or giving you kind of a brief overview of what allowable uses are. I can, I think the best way to do it might be to say, when Ed and I were going through the list of, of uses, what we did was consider, is a use going to be noxious in any kind of way? Whether that's noise, whether that's dirt, dust, those kind of things, whether that's hazardous chemicals? And if so, at what intensity are we, uh, are we okay with it existing in this business park? So that's why a lot of uses like livestock processing, heavy industrial uses are, are not included. Um, let's give you an idea of, let's go back up here.
Get rezone commercial, is the daycare still on there?
Daycare is in there.
I saw at the bottom there was something with schools, but I didn't see the daycare one.
I think it might be.
What does a conditional imply? How, I mean, how do you?
Conditional implies that we would like to allow it, but we would need to make sure that certain conditions were in place to make sure it didn't interfere.
Right, so what are those conditions?
They are on a case-by-case basis. The conditional use.
Case-by-case category by category, or?
No, I mean, like, each, each person that comes in and says, okay, I'd like to do this use, and it's listed here as conditional. We would say, great, you need to come in for a hearing, and you need to give us the opportunity to hear what your uses are, ask questions, and based on that information, impose any conditions that we think are necessary.
Sounds very subjective.
It is, yeah, I mean, that's the point. It's, it's kind of saying, look, again, the general philosophy for zoning for conditional uses is, it's something you intend to allow, but you need to make sure that whatever they're doing is done safely, right? Um, it's the best way I can describe it. It is subjective in the sense that each case is based on its own merits, right? They'll ask, you know, okay, you're a.
I mean, there isn't a standard, or, or whatever that you would refer to, it's just your.
Well, there are some, there are some of these standards, um, and they may be up further than down here, yeah. So what we did was we came up with a list of kind of standard conditions, if you will. And these would be applied to any, any use, but conditional uses as well, they'd be applied, um, a lot more strictly, and they'd be used as the basis for determining what other conditions would need to be applied. So, for instance, um, it has to require with any yard requirements set forth, so like side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, all those things. Um, signage needs to comply with the rest of the zoning resolution for signage. Parking needs to adhere to the parking rules and that are laid out in zoning resolution, how many spaces, how big they have to be.
So you refer back to the zoning.
Most of the time. Um, there are some specific ones. Uh, let's see here. There's one that talks about screening with the Creekside Trail bike path. So basically, that's not written directly into our code for this. It wouldn't be a use that would ultimately require screening, 'cause it's not a residential use. But in this case, we think that's important enough resource. If anyone were to come in and build adjacent to this Creekside Trail, we would require screening for that purpose. So these are, again, these would be applied to any use that comes in, but they should be a good jumping off point for what other conditions. And really, that would, like, if someone comes in and says, okay, we do, um, some sort of abrasive manufacturing, that, we'd know that that would require some sort of chemical in addition to whatever abrasive material they use, diamond, you know, diamond, uh, sanding belt, or whatever it is. You typically also have to have some sort of chemical for cooling and for other things. So we'd say, what chemicals use, use and store? How are they stored? And if they're stored inside in a, you know, haz, uh, like a hazmat locker type room, very controlled, then good, that's what needs to happen. If they come and say, oh, we planned on storing these barrels outside, and, no, 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 no. Conditional is that you must store any hazardous chemicals inside the main building, and, you know, compliant to whatever standard we'd link it to at the time.
So is the first step you're following here is just sort of doing a standard, you check on what's currently in that zone, and say, do they, do they fit within this categorization?
I think I'm understanding your question to say, take, are, we, we looked at all these uses and said, do they make sense within this area?
Right.
Right? Yeah, exactly. That's the first step. The second step was to go through and refine that selection by saying, okay, this use is iffy, so can we make use with a conditional use, in which we get that chance to kind of say, hey, here's the tweaks you need to make? Or is it just, hey, I don't think there's any way this is gonna work in a way that we're comfortable with, and that would just be a prohibited use?
So for example, the, the daycare center, it doesn't seem to fit. Would you look at that like as a conditional, and then would you require that property to come in and justify?
Well, so, if we change the zoning on something that's already existing, um, and it no longer complies with the zoning, it's called illegal nonconformity. We can't change the zoning and then say, now you have to comply. They've already built it to the basis of it.
But I thought you were implying that they didn't maybe even fit what, the way it was held before.
I am still looking for information whether or not there was some sort of conditional use hearing for it already. I've not been able to identify that information, but I can say this, it's there now, so. And, and let me be clear, I don't think it's a use that doesn't fit in the area. I think the activity that goes on here is very, if it's industrial, it's very light industrial, we're mostly talking, we've got a, a daycare, a bank. We've got several, um, warehouse-type operations where they store materials and ship them out. We've got an auction house, like an antiques auction house.
Buried.
Yes, it's, it's, it's more of a, it's more of a commercial park, really, than an industrial park, like you'd think, where there's like five shops and they're all laving, you know, manufacturing pieces. There's very little of that activity now. QQE just came in this year. They're a major manufacturer of quartz pieces. That's what they do. So they are the, the actual industrial use.
Manufactured what?
Quartz pieces. They, they manufacture quartz, uh, pieces that are used in other machines that build semiconductors. It's pretty cool, um, but they just joined us this year, so. Everything, it runs from a, a factory full of, you know, CNC lathe machines to a daycare and a bank. And I don't think any of those are necessarily at odds with one another, especially the way it's laid out, the daycare being up here. There's no, there's no reason for large semi trucks to even be closing, you know, passing close to there, those kind of things. So I guess what I'm saying is, in terms of what it's listed on here, daycare is listed as a conditional use, for those exact reasons. Ingress, egress, uh, making sure, hey, you can't locate your daycare right next to QQE with all the semi trucks coming in. But right at the top, they would be, parents would be able to come in, come out, and there wouldn't have to be any, they don't have to drive by, the kids don't walk by these, you know, large semis. Those are the kind of thought processes that go into whether it's conditional, permitted, or just prohibited. So I don't know if that gave you the.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Um, in this list, the daycare, for example, is a conditional use. And yeah, I will.
It's a, it's under nursery school.
Nursery school.
All right. Cause I didn't see it under C and D there.
Yeah.
Um, so it's conditional across the board.
And you know that is conditional.
In accordance with eighteen twenty-nine, what's eighteen twenty-nine?
So that would be, I believe, our zoning code, and I'd have to pull that up for you.
So, so are you trying to change this to a PUD IC? Is that what works ultimately?
Yes.
And what was it?
Uh, it's PVI, so just straight industrial, which again, I don't think fits what's going on there, which is more of a multi-use park area. All right, let's find eighteen twenty-nine. Yeah, so.
Licenses require you up to a place base.
So this is.
Creating agricultural, what's that one say?
Uh, maximum enrollment.
Number, number four.
Agricultural and residential district locations.
That's where our problem is, isn't it?
Well, it says nursery schools and daycare centers within ag and residential districts must be accessory to a place of religious assembly.
I see.
Located along a major street.
Yeah, okay, so we are no longer agricultural, it wasn't there.
Yes, so it would, this would not apply to that daycare.
But maybe when it was put in or approved, it was.
It's unlikely, only because the daycare is, is newer than the PUD itself. So, again, this one was created in eighty-four.
Maybe it was a church, didn't it?
Yeah, eighty-four, eighty-five.
Was it a church? No, the church is across the street. I don't know. I, I don't recall.
Can I see the picture? Can I look at the property again?
Sure. So where my head is. I'm gonna ask a question. You may or may not know it before you, before I start telling you what it is. See, it's right up there at the top.
Yeah.
Across this, that barn. They didn't move Dayton Zine Road that I know of, or that I recall. This kind of started, it wasn't really industrial. They tried to do like the banks and that sort of stuff here.
And I think this might give you, so this was really interesting to me, to give you an idea of. This is the letter, okay, that was transmitted to Matt Arnovitz, um, regarding this, okay?
Is that, was he the primary owner at that time?
Yes.
Did he purchase at that time and start this? Who owned it before Arnovitz?
I don't know that information. I would have to dig, do some digging to find that out.
The reason that I'm wondering is, what was the history of the fire station location, uh, in terms of the property ownership?
Um, again, that would be something I'd have to look into old records. Haven't only been here a couple of years, I'm not privy to that information, unfortunately.
One of the reasons I'm asking this, because I don't know where the fire department did any of their, I mean, call that fire retarded training and that sort of thing. Where I'm going with that is, we got a daycare, do we have any pitsoas or anything like that in the soil or that could be a problem? If so, where my mind, where my head is going with this is, regardless of that, rezoning it offers us the opportunity for chemicals that may have those things in them. And I think we need to become more cognizant of the consequences of those materials being in our township. Now, I also know that, and I'm sensitive for that because of the kids, the bank. And I think, I don't know if that gymnasium is still over there, the kids will practice in basketball or something, we've been there for a while too. Um, I think we need to be aware of that. Um, but I also know where we are politically if we don't rezome. We also know where we are with that.
Yeah, and I mean, look, it's not, um, so, right now, if I had to make a recommendation, we'd recommend it, but that's not where we're at. We're having, we wanna send this to regional planning for there, and those are the kind of things.
They will look at those?
That they can look at. I don't know necessarily that they would. I don't know that I can ask them to look at specific information that wouldn't be part of their normal review process.
Yeah.
Um, maybe during the, uh, executive committee meeting, I can bring it up and say, you know, this was a concern that was brought up for our zoning commission while the motion was being made. Do you see anything, can you suggest a way to improve either the language I presented or the rezoning boundary in such a way that it might help mitigate those issues? That might be a way I can bring it up, and they could offer suggestions to us based on that concern. Does that make sense?
I think, I think it would be good practice, and I don't know that it's being done anywhere. I think it would be good practice to do baseline environmental assessments at this time in all the things that we're doing. So I know that's a different thing than what you're asking for right now, but in that discussion, that could possibly be a way to address future things that come to us.
Yeah, and I, I think, so one, there's gonna be a great opportunity, as you know, we're, we're doing the Conference of Land Use Plan Update, and these are the exact kind of things that can go into that work.
Okay.
And end up being actionable suggestions from that process.
Okay.
If, something like that would require us to modify our zoning resolution to make it a requirement. We couldn't just impose it administratively, right?
Right.
Um, and again, not debate, in fact, I think that's a good idea. Um, it would just mean.
It's just a safeguard. That's all it is.
I think if there were demonstrable public support for something like that, it would be a lot easier for me to bring something like that in front of the trustees and say, hey, I think this is a change we need to make. If anybody comes in with any kind of commercial site, they need to perform, you know.
It's a risk management thing too.
It's also, and, and again, trying to look at it from both sides, it's an additional cost to developers. It's an additional time, uh, constraint on developers. I know that we need to balance, we just have to balance all concerns, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
So we need to think about that other side as well. Um, but yeah, it's definitely something that, um, and I can tell you, having worked with planning decks now for a little bit, we're gearing them towards, um, natural resources as a major, uh, as, something to really keep in mind while we're making this plan.
Yes.
This, it's very important to this community, so.
So to stick to the agenda and what you're asking for, tell me about timeline for you. If we, we haven't discussed this yet, but if we took more time to look over those conditional uses, is that going to cause any kind of problem for the landowner and/or the regional planning agenda?
Well, I think at, I think at this stage, so let me kind of, so in anticipation of a motion, I've given this to Deandra to look at so that she has time to review it in time for the August meeting. Now, if we don't get the motion, I call her and say, look, we're not there yet, so I need you to withdraw from the agenda. However, what I'm asking you for is a motion to send this to them for additional information. So I think in that time, you could be reviewing those.
So we're not making a final rezoning decision.
You are not making any decisions about it.
We're making a recommendation.
Correct.
Okay, we can move on. I'm done.
Okay.
So I do have a question.
Sure.
It wasn't clear when I read this. What is, what is the current owner trying to, um, renovate for? What purpose? What, do we have an idea as to what they're planning to put there?
We do, we do, and. We do, we do, and ouch, I'm trying to ride the line here between, I mean, this is not information that's required of him right at this moment, right? So I, it's, it's a proprietary business idea, so I'm gonna be vague.
That's fine, but I mean, it gives you some insight as to why he wants to do it.
So this parcel.
And would that be, would that be some, somewhat of a very different model than what else is, whatever, what's already there?
No, and that's, that's, so this parcel right here used to be a driving range, actually.
Used to be what?
A driving range.
That's what he's, that's what I didn't understand. So by driving range, what do you mean?
As in smacking golf balls.
That's where it?
Yeah, that's, that's what this property used to be.
And that's big enough to do that?
I, I suppose it is.
I guess.
Uh, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't get any of these new titanium drives out, you know?
Over shooting them.
But, also, so his thought, when he approached us, was he'd like to turn that space into what I would call mini incubators. Prefab spaces for businesses to start their journey.
Or an innovation cell.
I, I think, yeah, another way to put it, I don't want to go again into too many, too much specific details, but it'd be a number of small locations that companies starting out would, to essentially be their first floor space, test out ideas.
So it could vary quite a bit then, in terms of how it's gonna be used.
Exactly, it could be, you know, from the list, it could be food items, right?
In that regard, I do think we really need to study this closely.
I think we need to. Because the more variability he has, the wider he can go, we get that.
Right, exactly.
And, you know, because you're here to learn, one of the things that we really care about, there's a fine balance between the landowner being able to maximize the, the land usage versus the will of the citizens, and what it is that we need to do to protect their general health and safety, so. Yeah, okay, motion for them to do recommendation, and then for us to study, we need to study before we come back.
So do you have any more questions, or seeking any more information at this time on, on giving a motion for, to bring into regional planning for their recommendation?
Tell me about the recommendation again, tell me exactly the language you mean from us on that recommendation, to follow what we're saying.
So you, to be clear, you're not even making a recommendation at this point. You are, you would be making a motion to send this request to regional planning for review so that they can bring you their recommendation for your hearing, that you would eventually hold on to.
Right, you have to.
Perfect, can you do that, what he said?
I was hoping you.
No, I, I don't even have all my stuff with me because I came right from work, I feel bad.
I think if you wanted to, how would you make the motion, you could move to, to submit the proposed rezoning to regional planning for their official review.
Make a motion that we send this, and what is this?
Proposal number.
Proposal number.
What?
Uh, it does not have a proposal number at this time. I would just say the rezoning proposed in the meeting, maybe is the best way to do it.
What you just said.
Okay.
To regional planning?
Yes.
For their review?
Yes.
For their review with recommendations.
With recommendations.
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
And that recommendation will come back to this?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, and we're thinking, they're gonna see it in August, so we'll see it at the tail end of.
You'll see it at the beginning of September.
September. Okay, so we have our book. Okay.
I'll second.
You got all that, right?
Yep.
Because we're, we're paying attention back here, yes.
Kristen Horton?
Yes.
Anne Saltman?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Lauren, I appreciate your consideration.
All right, um, that's it?
The only thing we have on the agenda is for your consideration of the meeting minutes and.
And I was not here, so I probably don't get a vote on that.
Uh, which actually means, now that I think about it.
He can abstain, he should, he can abstain.
He can abstain, but we won't have a quorum voting. So we'll have to, we'll probably have to postpone that until we do have a quorum of members. Yeah, sure. And you said, sorry, what did you want to pull?
The agenda.
The agenda.
Which, which meeting minutes, what is, what is the date?
June.
So we just need a, a motion to to table those until we have a quorum.
Yeah, case eight thirty, it was the Hillside Farms specific site plan, you remember the, the most recent subdivision that came in.
Looks like a, it was a liability discussion, I missed.
Yeah, it, it was a, it's a new subdivision, and there's always a lot of questions, a lot of discussion about that, which is good, it's healthy, so. But yeah, I imagine they're pretty hefty minutes for that one.
So do we even motion to table, or do I just say that?
Uh, since we amended the agenda, yes, you would motion to table until.
Yeah, I make a motion to table the agenda, or the minutes.
For?
For. ZC eight thirty.
No, it's that whole, it's the whole meeting, so what was the date of the meeting?
Yeah, for six seventeen twenty-two.
Oh, for six seventeen twenty-two.
I'll second the motion.
Great.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
We'll table those until our next meeting.
Any, anything else?
I have no more business for you, if you have discussion items, I'm here to answer any questions, but.
One thing that I have not investigated for a while, and I think we need to do it, but I can't remember, do we need to be looking at our?
Yes.
It's on the tip of my tongue, are we all endorsed?
Your, oh, all of you, your term limits are all good.
Okay.
Uh, I thought you were going with the, technically, you're supposed to have an election of officers.
Yes.
Uh, we've done that for the BZA, they reinstated Brett Huntsman.
Okay.
We haven't had enough people that I've felt comfortable doing that.
Doing it, okay.
So when we next have our full membership, which would include Bob, because as you know, Seth's term ended, we're still looking for his replacement.
Do we have, um,
Alternates?
Alternates.
We do not have any alternates currently.
So do we need to get some alternates before we make those decisions as well? What's the plan?
Um, the, so I can tell you the plan is to recruit heavily. We spoke to one person that actually came in and did a brief interview with me. After contacting her, I haven't heard back from her, I know she's busy, she's a younger person, so I'm still trying to follow that route. Uh, that's the only real, I've asked another member of the community, I don't know if you know Mick Lundby by any chance, any of you? Uh, he's a Rotarian that we see when we go to our weekly Rotary meetings. He's, you know, a long-time member of the community, knows the trustees, kind of knows the, you know, this business aspect of it a little bit. But I've not yet had anybody say, yep, sign me up, so we are.
So as we are functioning right now, are we violating any of our own rules when it comes to not having an election of officers?
No.
Okay.
Um, I believe you must do it once a year, so technically you could do it in December, right? I mean, that's not ideal, because then ideally you would turn around at the beginning of the year and do it again.
Okay.
But, yeah, so I don't know if that answers your question.
Just wanna make sure we're following our own rules and following by the, by law.
So doesn't that make us four, for Bob, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, anything else we need to talk about? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second. Jeff?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.